Good afternoon, everyone. I would tell you to take a seat, but I don't think we have anymore. So, thank you all for coming. I'm very pleased to see this outstanding turnout. If you're interested in what transpired, actually, I got a call from Anamari, that's my new boss, on Christmas Eve. Oh, it was so exciting. And I didn't know what to do, and she was like she is, just as personable and comfortable as she could possibly be. And she said, "I want to tell you some good news. I am gonna make you an offer, but not right now." She said, "It's Christmas Eve. I have a house full of people," and I was in a house full of people too back in, I think I was, yeah, I was at my sister's house in Illinois. I was in both Illinois and Indiana over several times in each state over a couple days. And she said, "But I'll call you after Christmas and we'll talk." So, I could barely, you know, I was this high off the floor. But she did. She called me on the day after Christmas, and we quickly worked out a deal. I was easy. I wanted to come so bad, and I think she wanted me to come. So, we worked on that, and then you all saw the announcements. So, I began to transition away from Montana State University Billings, where I'd spent almost four years, which was difficult to do. I thought it would be so easy, move into a great institution like UWT, but I made a lot of friends there. It was a little more difficult. The last day was the worst, saying all of our goodbyes. But I learned something, too. You don't work as a provost, an academic vice chancellor, at a university till Friday, and start at a new university on Monday. That's a really bad idea. But I was so excited to come here, and I didn't really want to leave my friendships, so I did it that way. So, Kelly and I tried to pack up the car on Friday. This is last Friday. And after I left work, and our intention was actually to leave on Friday, but we didn't get that done. I got called by the real estate agent that we'd missed a paper and the signing of the house and all that, so we had to do all that, pick up the U-Haul, those kinds of things. So, we didn't leave till Saturday, and we spent 15 hours Saturday driving. And I think you were getting me prepared, because it started raining as soon as I left Billings. And rained all the way here. And then she had to leave on Sunday to go be with her mother. Her mother just had surgery, and there's three sisters, and they're taking turns doing a week each, so it's her week. So, she'll be back on Tuesday. Unfortunately, she can't move here until the last week of April, because our, my stepson, Roman, is in school at MSUB, and we want him to finish that semester. So, she'll be moving here, but she'll be here several times during the next six weeks. So, that kind of happened. She left at noon on Sunday, and then I jumped in. I moved into my office Sunday afternoon in the rain. The staff was extremely helpful. They let me park on the sidewalk right next to the building. I thought that was pretty awesome. If you saw that little red pickup truck, it looked like the Beverly Hillbillies, because they are moving me here, but not until April. So, I had to just bring the stuff from my office and, you know, some things to live in my house. So, then I showed up for work Monday morning, and it's been great. It's been a little bit of a whirlwind. And you may want to know what I plan on being up to. And I think what I better stick to is what I told you I'd be up to if you invited me to be your chancellor. So, in that PowerPoint that I did give back in December, I had a couple slides that talked about the first two to three months, and then the second, four to six months. So, I think I'm gonna stick right on with what we talked about. That's what Anamari said that she would like for me to do. So, I'm gonna get to know all of you. I need to learn the culture of UWT, and I can tell already, it's a little different than the culture of MSUB, which is a little different than the culture of Purdue University, which is a little different from where I came from, from Carbondale. But it's a wonderful culture, and I really like it. I feel part of it already. So, I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna learn the culture. I'm gonna learn the people. I need to see where all of you work. So, poor Alina is working on that, trying to schedule all of these things over the next couple of months. I want to come to you wherever you are and meet with your students, if you're a faculty group. I want to meet with the students of your area. I want to meet with the staff members, the leadership teams. I want to see all the cool things that you have in your area, even if it's a computer or a camera or, you know, a video camera, whatever. I want to see everything, because I'll be advocating for you all over the South Sound and all over the state, actually, all over the world. I plan on advocating for UWT, so I need to understand what that is I'm advocating for. Well, at the same time, it's obvious that our community loves us, and they expect a lot of the new chancellor's time. And our community is a wide definition of what that means. There are a lot of people who are our community. So, I need to meet all of those folks. I'm gonna balance my time between those two activities. I got started on that at the Target the other day. I introduced myself and told them, you know, that I was the new chancellor, and I've already found two WT graduates. And I can't remember exactly where the other one was, but I've been to the Utah store, the gas, not the Utah, the U-Haul store, the gas station. I've been to several places to eat, but I've met two already in the community. And then this morning, I had a wonderful breakfast. Ron, somebody help me. Thomas, Ron Thomas, president of the University of Puget Sound, had all of the leaders of the educational, higher educational institutions at his home this morning. He and his wife, Mary. It was really a great experience to get to know all these folks. There's another person, Sheila. I won't remember Sheila's last name either, who just became the president of TCC. Ruland, yes. And she got here a week before I did, but unfortunately, her mother passed away like the second or third day she was on the job. Had to go back to, I think, Wisconsin, and just got back yesterday. So, I got to meet her. And as we talked around the table this morning, it was really, it told me that we don't need to compete. These institutions all have a special purpose. There may be some competitions at the edges, but essentially, we have eight or more outstanding institutions who have a very similar mission to serve Tacoma and whatever their student base is. And I learned, the University of Puget Sound, only 20% of their people come from in-state. 80% come from out-of-state. So, we learn the different missions, that common mission we have together and pledge to work together. And I had to admit, when I got back, I invited them all to UWT for the next breakfast in August. And I didn't tell Josh that, but I told Alina, so we'll start on doing that, yeah. So, what else can I tell you? I want to tell you that also in my interview, I talked about looking at some things. I need to look at the capacity. I need to understand the capacity of UWT, because I know that we have a little pressure on us to grow, and I need to understand the capacity, so I don't get us in the position where we grow too fast and we can't serve the students in the way we're accustomed to. So, we have to organize that growth. We have to be strategic in the way we grow. We have to serve those students and those industries and businesses that need us to serve them. So, I'm gonna look at all that. And as part of that, I want to start a strategic planning process. A lot of people think, "Oh, man, don't do that." But it's gonna be like a soft strategic planning process. And if we can think of a better name to call it, I'm all ears, because usually, in academic communities, people don't like to talk about that. But for me, it's very, very useful. And for the last probably 25 years, I've been a strategic planning academic. Each job that I've had, I've first worked with the group very collaboratively to find out what it is that we best need to do next, and then write that down, and then start doing it. It really makes the job for all of us more simple or simpler if we have that. So, we'll be working on that. I need to establish what the leadership team is gonna be. That doesn't mean I'm changing all the leaders, but how we're gonna operate with meetings. I would like to establish a cabinet-level group that has a sounding board, both directions for the university, that can bring ideas and information from all over the campus and outside the campus, and then the other way around, too. So, I'll be doing that. And then we'll see what's next after we get that done. So, let me stop there and see if there are questions. If you could, we would like you to come to the microphone to ask your question. And is that correct, that we're gonna do? You come to the Senate room or over here? There are two of them. So, who has a question? You don't ask a question, I'm gonna get my PowerPoint out. Here we go.
All right. Hello, I'm Chad Condon. I'm a senator with ASUWT. I had a question. So, as you know, the late chancellor spearheaded the Seven and Seven Initiative to drastically increase enrollment at our campus over the course of a short time period. I'm concerned that that may not be wise. I've seen, I've been in classes that didn't have enough room for students. I've been in under-equipped laboratories. I've had teachers who were, in some cases, removed from their classes even midway through quarter, because they weren't capable of teaching the classes they were hired to teach. Career services is a quarter of the size it should be for a campus our size. So, my question is, do you plan to continue this initiative? And if so, how do you justify this to a student body who's seeing, who's seeing the compromises and the sacrifices that it's taking and won't be here to see, to see its benefits?
Well, there are a whole lot of questions in there, and I thank you for asking that. And yes, that's, that's on my mind a lot. It was on my mind when I came to interview, and it was clear in the material that you all supplied me to study to come interview. And I do believe there is an opportunity, because if you have something really good, and we have something fantastic here, more and more people are gonna want it. So, that's just a fact of life. So, more people are gonna want a University of Washington-Tacoma education, so we're gonna have to position ourselves to meet that need. I believe that's clear. But I think, being an engineer, I think we need to be deliberate. We wouldn't build a road too small for all the cars that are gonna drive on it. Likewise, we don't want to build an institution too small to serve the students that come. So, those two things will compete with each other, because if you know about how funding works, your funding comes in as you serve more students. You know, you get more tuition. You also get higher allocations because of your numbers and the performance-based funding and those things, and they lag a little bit. So, you're trying to build the facilities to serve these students before you have the money that is gonna be associated with them coming there. So, it's a hard thing, but I think this institution is in very good shape planning-wise, so that we can start building out, being able to serve those students as they get here, kind of just in time, possibly. So, there will be some uncomfortable situations, but hopefully, you've really liked your experience here, and you want other students to have a similar experience, and you'll accommodate a little bit of crowded classes to be able to do a strategic growth pattern to meet the needs of those. So, I'm aware of that, and we will watch that carefully. Faculty get cranky when they have too many students, and students get cranky when they don't have enough faculty time and things like that. Good question. Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name's Mike Honey. I've been here from the beginning in 1990. And not to hit you with too many things at once, but as you know, all across the country, this is happening, that the question of state funding dropping, demands rising, and particularly here, fast expansion, as you were just talking about. There are a lot of labor issues going on around the country, both with faculty and with staff. And one thing that's happening here that we're very concerned about, I think, a lot of us anyway, we think that it's about 70% non-tenure, not only non-tenure track, but part-time adjunct-type faculty. When we started, that wasn't the model at all. And of course, this has changed all over the country. So, that's one set of issues. How do we do something about that? Because we don't think that's healthy, particularly when you look at growth and where is that gonna go. Faculty feel that way, I think, in general. Secondly, an anomaly within the UW system at UW-Seattle and UW-Tacoma, the janitorial staff are all paid staff members of the university, just like a regular staff. Here, they're subcontracted out. And in the past, I know we've just changed companies. I don't know anything about that new company, but in the past, those conditions have been bad for those workers. So, we have two sets of things, probably more.
Yeah, probably more.
But I just wanted to put it on your radar screen and also see if you have some thoughts about what's going on with higher education in terms of these, both teaching and labor-related issues. They're sort of intertwined.
Sure. Thank you very much for that question. Did you say Mike?
Yeah.
Mike, thank you, Mike. The first, let me address the first one first. Yes, that's true, all over the country. The institution I just came with, that was the case. The state wanted to give us less and less money, but they wanted us to do more and more things with what we already had. They want us to serve our veterans better. They want us to teach our students more about financial accountability, all kinds of things. New initiatives all the time with less money. So, one of the things I talked about when I interviewed, we need to diversify more. We can't depend on them to meet our needs totally. It's just a fact of life. We're not gonna change that. So, we have to diversify our income sources. We have to be creative. We have to get faculty engaged in other types of things that will attract resources to the university. We have to look at other kind of activities. I know there are a lot of things going on here already. Increasing our sponsored programs is another revenue stream. Not only do you get the revenue to actually do the research or the scholarship activity, but you also get overhead funds. That's another area we can look to increase and bring resources to the campus. In the meantime, I am sensitive to what you talked about with the ratio of tenure-track faculty with part-time or other non-tenured or non-long-term committal faculty. And that's a dangerous thing. I think there's a healthy balance, especially in an institution like this. This is an institution, I believe, so far, maybe I'll learn differently, that prides itself in what we produce is very practical. The degrees that we supply, or not supply, the degrees that we endow on the students that come here, prepare them to be successful in graduate school or to go right into the business community or to become a teacher or what have you. That takes a little bit of those part-time faculty. We need professionals out in the workplace to come supplement what we do as tenure-track faculty. Oftentimes, tenure-track faculty spend a lot of time in the laboratory, in the classroom, and they do keep up with their professions, their professions. They do better themselves. They do learn new things, go to conferences, but there's nothing like a practicing professional in that discipline teaching, too. So, I think there's a good balance, but maybe we need to look at where we are right now. And I will be aware of that, and I promise you that we won't move in the wrong direction, okay? And I'm not saying what that direction is yet, because I don't know all those numbers yet. Harlan did give me a whole bunch of numbers, but Harlan's given me a lot of things for the pass-up of this. So, your other question, I am vaguely aware of that. Again, that particular situation is something that is just happening on college campuses as they try to make decisions on where they can both best put their resources. So, the way I understand it here, we are a little different than the other two campuses of the University of Washington. But what I understand is, we did put out a RFP and reviewed all the different companies that submitted contracts, or not contracts, proposals to be our janitorial service. And the one that won the contract, is it ABM? ABM won the contract. It's a very reputable firm. They're a unionized firm. They have very good benefits for their employees. The wages in that particular field are not really high, but compared to some of the other firms, they are decent. The starting wage is a little lower, but if you come into that with some experience, you get a really decent raise. You get good benefits, workman's compensation, I think vacation. It's a really good package. I looked at it a little bit yesterday. So, I believe that's a reputable firm. I think they'll do a good job. The young lady that's the custodian in our building, I met her yesterday. She's a delightful person. She seemed to me, I didn't interview her, but she seemed very happy in her job. Actually, we can take a part of that. We can take responsibility for that, too. As I was thinking about that yesterday, we should treat her like she's an employee of our university. So, we can facilitate that. In the parking lot the other day, I met the gentleman who was, I wanted to tell him not to give me a ticket, because I didn't have a sticker yet. But I also just talked to him, and he said he wasn't employed by UWT. But you know, he seemed like it, and I treated him like he was employed by UWT. We have the same thing with the library. We have these wonderful library people. Where are the library people? There are some of them, yes. And they're really not employed by us. They're employed by Seattle, I think. I don't know for sure, but you're not, you're employed by us?
Yes.
Good, okay, good. Yeah. I almost stuck my foot in my mouth. But I think we ought to work to make them a part of our campus and make the conditions excellent for them. And also, I believe that that group, their schedule is such, they can also interact with other facility service people and be a part of our campus. So, I'm looking for good things with that contract now. It is the contract that we have, so we'll continue to honor that, and we'll work to make things better. Thank you, yeah. Next question.
I had a question.
Yes.
I'm Will McGuire. I'm an assistant professor here.
I will.
And I guess I'm gonna continue. It seems a theme is emerging about how do we manage growth here, which you mentioned a little bit about. And one thing that I guess I've noticed or I've thought about a little bit is that the growth in our undergraduate student body seems to come from, on the one hand, transfers from community colleges, where students are equipped with a lot of skills that they need to do well here. And on the other hand, we see it as part of our mission to serve students who come from maybe underrepresented populations or people who don't have the same opportunities that on other campuses, and that's why they come here. But I'm a little bit concerned about how well we actually serve those students, that we tend to get a lot of success with our community college transfers, but those people who are starting here as freshmen seem to struggle quite a bit. And I know it's probably early to ask for specifics, but I wonder if you had any thoughts about how to manage that problem as we continue to grow along that particular margin?
Well, that puts me right in the middle of a little stress that we have on this campus, I believe. The stress between maintaining that excellence and the prestige of the University of Washington and also that stress that we've taken on of being an urban-serving campus, more open access to meet the needs of the population here in the city of Tacoma and surrounding South Sound region. So, it will cause us to be uncomfortable as we deal with that and figure out exactly where we want to land in that spectrum. And I had a good conversation with the other presidents and chancellors this morning. We're across the board in what, in those populations we serve. The University of Puget Sound has a very selective student body. The community colleges and technical colleges are less selective. We end up kind of in between all that. You know, one thing I did learn this morning, that those other institutions respect what we do very, very highly and appreciate what we do. They love the fact that we have a four-year public institution right here, so all students from Bates Technical College or Tacoma Community College or, what are a couple more of them? Pierce? And one had two names.
Clover Park.
Clover Park. Clover Park. All those have a place to come. I met the executive director of Evergreen Tacoma this morning, too. Olga, I believe, is her name. Wonderful person. She wouldn't have gotten her education if that site hadn't been there on the hill, just up the street from us. So, there are great opportunities for us. We need to figure out where we land. And you're exactly right. As long as we do have some form of access mission and are allowing and inviting underserved or underprepared or whatever we categorize the students as that you're referring to that have difficulty, our responsibility, if we accept them in, they'll have responsibilities, too. You're the teacher. You can tell them, you know, on your syllabus, what the expectation is. However, I feel a responsibility to serve them. We need to meet each student where they are and help them get out the door at that level that you, the faculty, say is what's necessary before they can get out the door. So, you're exactly right. We are gonna have to struggle with that, and hopefully, you'll get involved with a conversation. And that's part of our strategic visioning process, to try to determine where we're best positioned for the future to serve. Because between the eight colleges, I think we can get the whole job done. Thank you.
I just want to welcome you.
Thank you.
So, my name is Erica Klein, and I'm chair of Sciences and Mathematics. And as such, I'm really concerned about supporting undergraduate research opportunities on this campus. And I just wanted to bring to your attention a program that was really wonderful, that was unfortunately discontinued last year. It was called the Chancellor's Undergraduate Research Fellowship? I might be saying it wrong, but at any rate, it provided support for undergraduates to engage in research, and it was a really wonderful support for bringing students into that. So, I just wanted to encourage you to explore other alternative ways that we could maybe promote that type of thing, support students, in particular, supporting them putting the time in to do undergraduate research, because that's oftentimes very challenging for our particular demographic. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Sarah. I thought you were gonna tell a joke when you came up there, because you were smiling so big. But I am an advocate of undergraduate research. I think when I interviewed here, I'd just gotten back from New Jersey. Are you familiar with CUR, the Council for Undergraduate Research? I went to my first CUR workshop for two days and got brainwashed on how important that was and how strategic and deliberate you have to be to make it be successful on a campus. So, no wonder it came and went here, because if you don't really put resources and thought behind it, it's hard to sustain something like that, for two reasons. The first is because the students, you know, the students at a place like this, not all of our students, we probably have all kinds of students, but a lot of our students have a job, maybe two jobs, have to pick up the kids, all kinds of things. So, for them to work on undergraduate research is just gonna be another burden for them, and they may not want to. So, it can't be for everybody. But for a lot of the students, it would be a wonderful opportunity for them, so we owe it to them to provide those opportunities. So, that's the first issue. The second issue is the faculty. We already asked you to do quite a bit, I'm sure. If we don't, I'll ask you to do some more if we don't, but I'm sure we do. And then to ask you to also start supervising undergraduates, almost like you would graduate students, that can become a burden, too. So, I think we need to have a pretty clear idea of how we're gonna reward and support faculty that do that. Maybe some administrative support centrally to bolster that. The conference I went to, that was kind of the topic. We also talked about making sure that that is accepted and actually upheld in the promotion and tenure process as well. You don't want faculty doing all those things with their undergraduates and not get credit for it like you do if you're teaching graduate students. I think we should do that, but we need to do it so that we can do it well. Sarah? Here comes, oh, two questions.
Okay. I'm just trying to be polite. Robin Evans-Zagni, I'm an assistant professor here. Seeing as we're moving into a conversation about research, too, noting that we're a teaching university, but we have a lot of very eager and interesting projects that we're doing that are community-based research right here in this community, and yet, we are sort of woefully undersupervised in this institution for doing research or applying for, competitively applying for national funding in terms of support staff and ability to be able to get your, get your proposal out and vetted by the right people fast enough to get in and to make it a competitive proposal, and then to have the facilities to support that. So, I'm wondering what your, what your vision is for strengthening that arm of this university?
Well, I think it's a very important arm. You know, I came from 19 years at Purdue University. Purdue is a research one, outstanding research university. And during my time there, I worked for, I think, four different presidents, but two of those presidents during that time came in and said, "We're gonna double our research enterprise." So, first, we went from 150 million to 300 million during one presidency, and then the president that was there when I left wanted to go from 300 to 600. And she was right on track as I was going out the door, and I think she finished that. She stayed a year longer than I did. So, I'm familiar with doing that, but I'm also familiar with the resources it takes to get that going. Now, the good thing about it, though, is if you can jump-start it or seed those kinds of activities, it's kind of like a snowball. Once you get it going, it kind of seeds itself. And as those overhead dollars come in, you can put them back in to the academic departments where that research is going on. You can put it back in centrally to the people that help service your research projects, the facilities that you house your research projects in. So, I would like to do that, but I also understand, we're a teaching institution, so we can't get out of balance. But I've never heard of a faculty member who would not want to push themselves. And how do you do that? By doing scholarship or research. If you're a music faculty, it's not necessarily called research, or if you're an art faculty, but whatever that is that pushes you to think harder, to think more critically, we have to be a role model for our students. So, I'm an advocate of doing that. We need to probably do more, but again, just like the undergraduate research, we have to support our faculty when we do that. And you're probably wondering, how are we gonna do all these things at once? Well, we're not gonna do them all at once. We are going to decide what of these are our priority, and there were, we're gonna decide which ones we do first, and a lot of them might happen in parallel, but how fast we go. And then we're gonna decide, before we start anything, how we're gonna pay for it. Because we just don't want to start something without having a good idea of how we're gonna pay for it. So I don't know if I answered your question, but I'm gonna be behind that, not too much too quickly, because we have to grow into that. So thank you for your question. What kind of professor or what's your area? Where? Oh, nursing, okay, excellent. Hello.
Janet Promomo, another faculty member in nursing and healthcare leadership. I've been here since 92, when our nursing program started, so I've been here a bit. And I've been involved over the years in faculty governance. So not so much right now, but I have been. So my question to you has to do with what comment you made about having a cabinet or an informal group or formal group that will advise you. So it's sort of a self-serving question, but will you include our faculty governance leaders, leadership? We have a faculty, a formal structure, our faculty assembly. So would you include the faculty assembly leadership, our staff association leaders, and of course, our student leaders?
Well, first, let me preface my comment by, I'm the kinda person that even though I'm the chancellor, everything isn't up to me. You might find that hard to believe. I just don't believe in that. I believe in shared governance and a team. So to answer your question, yes. However, how that happens is yet to be decided. I need to talk to the faculty assembly and I'm invited soon, like two weeks? Yeah, a couple times to come visit with the faculty assembly and talk to them about that. I've already talked to the vice chancellors about that, how we're gonna set that up. One thing that makes it difficult is you change, are they presidents or chairs of the faculty assemblies? Chair? Chair. You change chairs every year, but we can deal with that. We're smart people. So the answer is yes. What form it's gonna take? It's too early. I've been here three days, but I want to include that and we'll talk more about how that manifests itself soon. But you can always tell me what's on your mind, so that'd be one way. Come on.
Hi, I'm Belinda Louie from Education Program.
Do you do roller derby?
I just have a simple question. Online learning has been started on our campus, but it is not something so simple as I experienced. So I wonder, what is your vision regarding online learning on campus and what kind of support? If we are going to go that direction, that what kind of support is there for faculty and staff to engage in that process?
Well, that's like the other questions too. That's a kind of a loaded question. And yes, I enjoy online learning. I've never taught a class online myself, but the previous institution, not the one I just left, but before that, I was at Purdue University. I was dean of extended campus and that organization was responsible for all the online learning at Purdue University. Now, Purdue University is a great, big place, 40,000 students, but our online component was 2.5% of the credit hour production of that large university. But 2.5% of the credit hours produced by 40,000 students is pretty big. But the faculty there were very cautious about moving that direction. You know, it's a residential, longtime prestigious engineering school, so we proceeded with caution. And it took six or eight years to get to a comfortable spot, because we insisted at Purdue, it's another place that really does things well. It's not gonna do anything unless it does it very, very well. So we worked very hard to support everything we did before we got it going. Now, the institution I just came from, it was a whole different story. The institution I just came from produces 37% of its credit hours online. And that institution is much like ours, 45,000. Well, it was 51 when I got there and now it's 48. We had a oil boom in western, no, eastern Montana that sucked a lot of the students away, because they could get $85,000 driving a truck. But anyway, we had a really robust online program, but it wasn't supported consistently across all the disciplines. And as provost, being chief academic officer, I wrestled with that all the time. I would wrestle with students that didn't feel like they were being well-served by the professor that was teaching online. They felt like they had maybe not passed this class two semesters ago and now they're in it again and it's exactly the same thing. It's just another repeat of the PowerPoints. So I'm not in favor of us putting un-interactive things up for our students, but I think our students nowadays demand that we have some flexibility and some online learning. So I would like to see us have a healthy component of online where it makes sense to meet those needs, but whatever we do, we need to do it very, very well. And if we want, there are some institutions that do do it very well. We could invite a couple people to come, talk to us, look at what we do, make some suggestions, and then we can respond to it. So I have a lot of experience in that, but I'm not gonna just bring that experience and say, "We are gonna do this, because I have to see what makes sense." Put pressure, the front row hasn't asked a question yet. And still not gonna ask a question. Well, let me ask you a question. Why did you start working here? The person behind you, yes. Could you use a microphone?
So I'm fairly new to the campus. I started in June and I'm a transplant from Iowa.
Excellent.
Where I was in Student Services. I was associate director of the Student Union for a very long time.
Where in Iowa?
University of Iowa.
Oh.
Iowa City, Iowa.
You know Sally Mason?
Sally Mason, yes.
Oh, okay.
She was in our building almost every week.
Really?
Taught a class in our building.
She was my mentor. She hired me into my first dean's position. I love Sally Mason.
Yeah.
I would, can I tell off-color, no, I better not. I'm not, I'll tell you after this, okay? Let's start.
So I came here because I was very interested in the commitment that the campus had to the underrepresented population and sort of that first-generation population. I moved from being inundated with students to sort of being very inundated with faculty. I'm Director of Administration and Operations for IAS here.
Excellent. Did you have a connection with Washington or Tacoma?
I have a very good friend from junior high who lives in Seattle, so I'd been here to meet her several times for her wedding and whatnot and just loved the area, so decided I needed to live on the coast and here I am.
Thank you very much. And how long have you been here?
Since June.
Since June. Welcome her to campus. Let's talk after for a minute. I gotta tell you the story about Sally.
Welcome. I'm Jen Adrian. I'm from the Center for Leadership and Social Responsibility. I need to take a breath. From the Millgard School of Business. And I represent staff. We've been really hungry for opportunities for growth as staff and for advancement opportunities, for professional development opportunities. There hasn't been really a clear pathway for us to move forward. We're all here because we love it here just as much as everyone else and a lot of us are making our careers in higher education and want to keep developing those skills. There's been a lot of talk about bringing staff up, but there hasn't been a real clear pathway to do that. So it's really not a question, but more of a comment and a reminder to you, this is something that we're asking of you to do for us.
Well, I would be happy to do that. One of the positions I had just before the last one, I talked about it at Purdue, that particular organization that I was dean of had 64 people and not one of them was faculty. All the faculty belonged to other deans or units, so I had all staff. So that was a big item on my plate and we worked very hard. It was in our strategic plan there to provide for the professional development and promotion and advancement of our staff. So we got that into plan and because, I'm the kinda person that because it said that in our plan, I didn't stop until we got people happy that we're making progress on that. It's also in our Montana State Plan to provide those opportunities for professional development and advancement of our staff. So let's get it in the plan. I'm gonna involve staff in the planning process and I'll need your help on what makes sense. You know, because I'm more familiar with what makes sense for faculty, because that's how I grew up, so to speak. So we just need to understand what makes sense for you and get that in place. First row's gonna ask a question. It better be a good one. We've been waiting for this.
I'm Tim Bostel and I've been working here since 1995, graduate, so now you've met three of us.
Three, alright.
I work in the library. I'm the head of IT for the library. And my question is, what are you gonna do with the fourth floor of the Tioga Library Building?
The fourth floor of the what building? What would you like me to do at the fourth floor? I don't know. There must be something behind there. It's completely empty, okay. We can teach some students up there. I don't know, I'm sorry. You stumped me. You stumped me. I didn't know we had a vacant, is it nice? Can you see that shahouli statue? We're gonna move my office up there. Can we do the Harlem move my office? I'm sorry for not having an answer. I just don't, I just, yeah, I don't know.
But it's on your radar.
It is now. It is. Smart guy. What else? We have, oh, here, good.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Becker from IAS. I'm one of the associate deans there. And recently in IAS, what was that?
Me?
Bonnie.
Bonnie, okay, yes.
Recently, we had a workshop for assistant professors and for lecturers on work-life balance. And we had a discussion about how we had forgotten to ask you the last time you were here about what you thought the role was for upper leadership in promoting work-life balance on the campus. So now is our opportunity. Nobody else has asked me a question, so I thought I'd give it to you.
Well, I hope the role isn't leadership by example and work-life balance, because so far this week, it hasn't been balanced at all. I did go run about two miles yesterday. That's the first time I got to run in like over a week. But I believe in work-life balance. I'm a family person. I have, not a really big family, but I have three children. One of them lives here. I can't call them children. He's gonna be 28 at the end of the month. I have a daughter in Bozeman and a son that produced Ari, my grandson, back in Billings and some extended family. So I want everybody, whatever your family represents, if it's pets, partners, whatever, I expect everybody to enjoy their time away from work, whatever your hobbies are, because it makes you a better employee when you're at work. Of course, when you're at work, I would expect you're doing your job well, you're working hard, you're representing us well. Maybe, I don't know what the work-life programs are here. I'm sure we have some, maybe we need more, but every institution that I've worked in so far, I participated to the best of my abilities. I remember Purdue had the coolest one. At Purdue, we had a work-life program that you could get points on and every time you got a point, like if there was a 5K race or something in the community, or if you ate a certain kind of healthy food for a couple weeks, you filled out a little card. You could take those, get your points, and you got free running shoes at one of the local foot lockers. So that, I thought that was cool. So we need to do something. I don't know what we do here. Who's responsible for that here? Are you responsible for that or you have a question?
Not entirely.
Okay.
I'm Anna Salyer. I'm the Community Outreach Librarian and there are a number of us here that are part of the whole U, which, and we're ambassadors, ambassadors. And so what we do in conjunction with Seattle and Bothell is we provide different programming that's primarily out of Seattle and it came from President Jiang's wife. So she started this program and they're still going to maintain it. And so we have physical activities, we have challenges, there's a scavenger hunt coming up, there's all kinds of programming. And we have been part of two Guinness Book of World Records, so, well, one and then one pending.
One pending.
So, yeah.
Umbrella one is that?
Yes, absolutely. So we have lots of different activities and connections both to Seattle and Bothell. Programming, seminars, workshops, et cetera.
Excellent. So we have some things. We could all walk up to the hilltop for lunch and back. That would be quite a...
Hello, my name is Anderson Asmento. I work with Institute of Technology here. And you spoke to us about expansion, right? And I understand that probably that means expanding the number of students that we receive now, but it probably also means that expanding the degrees. And my question is concerning, you know, new courses related to technology. Those courses are notoriously expensive, you know, for setting up. We have to have labs, we have to have machines, technicians. So what are your views on having new technology-related courses here?
Well, I think it's all part of our enrollment management plan and I think it's important for me, like I said, keeping in contact with those eight other institutions around this area and finding those niche things that we do very well and we can provide for people. I don't know what those things are. I have talked to Bill several times. We've probably had more meetings than any person I've met with so far and he's presented several ideas that are ongoing in the various schools and programs and I started to say colleges, but we don't have colleges. Do we just have schools and programs? Schools and programs, yes. So those remain to be seen, but I think the STEM workforce, there's always more to do in that area and especially in a place like Tacoma where we have blue collar, a lot of those kinds of jobs around here. We have a lot of technical jobs, white-collar jobs too that are technical. So I'm sure there are things we're gonna be doing. It's just too early for me to say exactly what they are and I'm glad we have people like you here to help do that dialogue and engage me and the rest of us with the community so we end up doing the right things. And like I've said, it's almost like a repeating thing. We wanna do it very well. So thanks for that question. Time for one more.
My name is Jake Nelko. I'm the Career Development Specialist. Could you talk just a little bit about how, to kind of follow up on that last question, how you would describe the factors that you would take into consideration in determining where you'd like to see the university grow academically?
Where it's gonna grow academically?
Academically, with regard to what programs would we like to see expanding or being created based on the needs of our community.
Okay. Well, let me use another example to do that. We just went through an academic program prioritization that's a mouthful process at my institution right now. And as provost, I was, kinda had to lead that. Now, I did have a committee chair that led the committee, but it was a very serious undertaking, because that process, what it was designed to do was help guide the university in deciding which of its programs we were gonna add resources to, to grow those programs. If we weren't meeting the needs of the nursing professions in the region, or if we weren't meeting the needs of the electrical engineering profession in the region, we needed to understand that and if we had capacity or didn't have capacity, let's figure out how we get the capacity to grow. And that was the easiest part. The harder part was what programs maybe have met their life cycle and we no longer need to do. I don't think we're at that point yet. My institution I just came from, or their institution that I just came from, is about 95 years old. We're only 25 years old here, so maybe there's not too many programs. But it was a very serious undertaking. Faculty, staff, and students across campus got engaged in it, but before we started that process, what we did was determine exactly what you said. What are the factors that we're gonna consider to help inform the decision-making process as we move forward? And we spent three months just deciding on those. We ended up with eight criteria. If you wanted to go see what those criteria are, they are online. You would have to go to Montana State University Billings website and put backslash APC, that's Academic Program Council, that was the group. And then you would see that the first page shows you the eight criteria. Now, those eight criteria had three or four sub-criteria each. But just to give you an idea, they were the cost. That wasn't a real important one, but that is a consideration when you're looking at growing programs, so cost. It's uniqueness in the state, because we are a state institution. We're a public institution, so how unique are we in Washington? Now, there's more people in Washington than there are in Montana, so you can probably have more duplication. In Montana, that was an issue. You can't duplicate, which is kinda silly, because Montana's also 10 hours across, but very difficult to duplicate programs there. So if you live in eastern Montana, you have to commute 10 hours. So you could look at those, but we would decide what those criteria are as a campus. I wouldn't decide. Well, do we have time for another one or are we all? Does anybody have a burning question? Well, let me again, oh, yes, here's a burning question.
My name is Katie Monks. I also work at the library. So we're busting stereotypes about librarians right now. We're quite talkative. Mine is not a question, it's more a comment. And I wanted to say welcome to UW Tacoma. I am also an alumni of UW Tacoma, as many of the people who've come up and talked have been and was very excited to join UW Tacoma again after being away for five years. And I'm also the children's librarian, so I wanted to say, as a recent grandparent, we have a wonderful collection of children's books at the UW Tacoma Library that support our educators and the education program. And you can check those out and read them to your newest addition to your family.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
Well, I have to tell you, Ari, my grandson, his room is decorated in Dr. Seuss. Well, I have to tell you, Ari, my grandson, his room is decorated in Dr. Seuss. So, and I bought, I had so much fun going and buying all those Dr. Seuss books to spread around his room. But he, his parents, I didn't even know they had this in them, have painted on the walls Loraxes and all that kind of stuff, so he would love to see that. Well, let me just tell you, kind of end on a note, and kind of tell you where I am in my life right now. We were very fortunate, we sold our house in Montana to the second people that looked at it. That was one big stress reliever right away. We were fortunate enough to find a house in Tacoma that we agreed on right away. We just couldn't agree if we could afford it or not, but we agreed on it. So we bought a beautiful home here, and I actually have owned it since Monday, so I'm really excited about that. I just don't have any furniture, or I would invite you over. And Kelly, I've already talked about Kelly. She is, I'm going to fly back there April 28th and be gone about three or four days as we supervise the moving truck bringing us here. So she'll be here at the beginning of that next week. And after that, we will be full-time, all of our family. I have a stepson, I said Roman, who's in our household still. He hopes to become a UWT student, but we'll have to see how that works. And then I'm just going to be your chancellor for a while, so thank you for coming today.